Welcome and good afternoon. Thank you for attending today's forum. The candidates on the screen are running for school board members in District 47, Crystal Lake, Illinois. My name is Kate Williams and I'm the president of the Legal Women Voters of McHenry County. The League's purpose is to promote responsibility through the informed and active participation of all citizens. Providing this forum enables the members of the community to become better informed about the issues facing our community and the candidates running for office. We're pleased to offer this service to you. We're not able to present our normal forums at McHenry County College, and we found using Zoom allows an excellent opportunity for both candidates to participate and for the community to view the YouTube video. These forums meet both our state and the US guidelines for forums. Today's presentation, our moderator and timer will only appear on the screen, will not be using any chat or raised hand features. And all the questions were submitted to the candidates and they came from various community members and community groups. We've exchanged cellphone numbers in the event that a candidate loses connectivity. Should they be off-screen and miss the opportunity to answer a question due to technical difficulties? When they return, they'll be given one minute to answer the questions they missed. I'm pleased to introduce our moderator today, Anna Gifford. Anna is our Secretary Treasurer for the Legal Women Voters of McHenry County and a trained moderator. And I'm really glad she has the time to be with us this afternoon. So Anna, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here today. It's my opportunity here to explain a little bit about the format and the rules for this forum. Each candidate was contacted and has agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters, and they are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order, and I will rotate this order for questions during the forum. Each candidate will have one minute for your opening statements. Each candidate will have one minute to answer questions, and I may repeat the question if you need. It should be noted that each question will be asked of each one of you. At the end of our meeting, each candidate will have two minutes for closing statements. Our timer today is Rich Wusnum. Rich will be holding up paddles with timing increments for each question asked. The candidates will be given a 30-second warning, so please quickly complete your thoughts before you see the stop sign. I will allow you to finish a statement. However, if it looks like that statement is going to turn into a paragraph, you will be stopped and/or muted. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all of the candidates. Today's forum will be recorded by the League of Women Voters to be used educating the public. The link to this forum will be available early next week and on the website and Facebook accounts, and the candidates have agreed to this. No voice, image, or other duplication of the forum may be used by a candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. The Legal Women Voters claims copyright ownership of all recordings, transcripts produced from this event, and reserves the right to publicize this forum. Today, we will hear from the candidates hoping to represent Crystal Lake School District 47 as school board members. We have seven candidates vying for four positions. I am going to ask Kate to please read the letter from Betsy Les.
Thank you. Betsy's not able to be with us, and as per guidelines, we allow a written statement. "Good evening. My name is Betsy Les, and I'm running for reelection to School District Board 47. I regret I'm not able to join you today. I have an important family commitment that is my priority at this time. I apologize for not being available. I want to thank the Legal Women Voters of McHenry County for hosting this event. I've served on District 47's Board of Education for the past eight years. My motivation to run for a board position has been specifically to give back to the Crystal Lake community. This community enabled me to have a successful career in education, and I had a job I loved and enjoyed. I was principal in district for 20 years. During that time, I was at Canterbury for seven years, and I had the opportunity to open the newly constructed Woods Creek School in 1997. I was an elementary teacher in McHenry and also served as a reading specialist. I have extensive background in education that enables me to understand the issues and concerns, both from a teaching perspective and the administrative perspective. In addition, I'm a mom, a grandmother, and a taxpayer in Crystal Lake, so I understand concerns from all. My education includes a bachelor's degree in education, a master's degree in reading, a master's degree in educational administration, and a doctorate degree in curriculum and instruction. I've always been a lifelong learner. The COVID pandemic has been the biggest challenge that faced District 47 since I was part of it. As a board member, we face the daunting task of determining if students should be in school or learn remotely. We needed to make it about safety of our school staff and students, the top priority in providing a quality education at the same time. As a board, we had to make many hard decisions during that 12 months. We were united in our belief that it would ultimately be the parents that would choose the best academic environment for their children, whether it was remote learning or in-person when it was safely possible. We made a commitment to our parents and staff that we would honor the recommendations of our health officials, and we did that. Moving forward, we need to continue to bring students back into our school for full-day school while maintaining the mitigation recommendations given to us as best we can. We also need to address the academic and social-emotional needs of our learners post-pandemic. For more information, please visit my website, betsyles, B-E-T-S-Y-L-E-S dot com, or my Facebook page, BetsyLes-D47BoardofEducation. Thank you, Anna."
All right, we'd like to begin with the opening statements. You have one minute. Ms. Barton, would you like to begin, please?
Certainly. I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. For the past 33 years, I've worked as a special education teacher and administrator, and my goal has always been to help the students who needed the most help. Now that I'm retired, I want to support all the children in my community. I want to respectfully listen to parents, educators, and community members, and use my experience to balance the needs of the students and staff while being fiscally responsible. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the board, I will work hard to make District 47 the best that it can be. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I'm muted. Yes. Hi. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I am a lifetime resident of McHenry County, grew up in Huntley, moved to Crystal Lake after college, and when I was married to my husband Jonathan in 2009, we moved to Crystal Lake in the hills where we reside with our three children. I am a Realtor by trade with Berkshire Hathaway in Woodstock, based out of Woodstock, and focused on commercial real estate. I also own my own business, focused on creating comfortable and cohesive spaces for businesses and staging for residential homes. By far, my most important role and what drives me to be involved in the school district is being a mom, of course. The most important qualities I've learned as your current board member is the art of listening and decision-making in the best interest of others.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Again, thank you so much for having us here as a community member. It's such a great opportunity, what you guys do to help educate the community and who they're voting for, because it is a very important decision coming up in all elections. So thank you so much. I hope to give you a little bit of who I am tonight. I am a lifelong resident of McHenry County. I'm a math teacher at Prairie Ridge High School. My wife is a special education teacher at Ber Notice. I have two, soon-to-be-three kids in District 47. I'm a current board member, obviously, and I'm, you know, I'm running because I just have an absolute passion in education. I love to see kids learn. I love learning to be student-centered, but I'm also a dad. You know, I'm in the community as well, and I just want a better system, the best system available for our community. So really, just the biggest initiative is to be able to help, you know, us have a great educational system for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to everybody tonight. My name is Tim Mahaffey, and I currently serve as the Superintendent and Business Manager in Fox River Girls School District. I'm running for the school board because I love Crystal Lake. I've been here for 26 years, and everything about this community is what I stand for. It's an outstanding community. My wife and I and two daughters have been in here for, in the district for 26 years, and we plan to retire here in this community. Running for a seat on the school board can't be about an individual incident or an individual cause. The moment I'm sworn in, I know I will be representing the voices of the entire school community. I need to and will listen to our parents, teachers, support staff, administration, the students, the business people, the taxpayers. Together, we are Crystal Lake, and we all matter. As a single vote of seven in a decision as one board, I hope to support our entire community through excellence in our public school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palumbit?
Great, thank you. Like my colleagues here, I'd like to thank the League for organizing tonight's forum with thoughtful, well-rounded topics. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for engaging in this process so we can make sure that the community is aware of each person who is running for one of these seats. It's a very important, you know, local elections really truly matter, sometimes more than some of our national elections because it has a real impact on all of us and where we live. I'm a veteran professional educator and educational leader in neighboring school districts. I've been an educator in both the special education field and also the general education classroom settings, and I currently work in student support services, working with students with impairments and students with disabilities. One thing I think is very important is how we look to best support our students as we return to whatever our new normal looks like, and taking into consideration social and emotional supports, not only for our students but for our staff and our community as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Talbert?
Hello. Like everybody else said, I thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this, and I'm honored to be on this panel. My name is Cashett Talbert, and I am a parent with five children with special needs, and my, three of whom actually are in District 47 schools. My husband and I moved our family out to Crystal Lake in 2014, and we chose Crystal Lake because of the great schools. I'm a professional writer and published author. That's what I do for a living. That's my career. But my career that I honor the most is being a mother. And when the schools all shut down, my kids were affected negatively with the schools closing down, and so their needs were not met. And so I reached out to other parents who had the same concerns, and many of whom spoke up in front of the board meetings, and they emailed the board members. But a lot of them told me that their voices were not being heard and their concerns were not being met.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, candidates, I would like to begin with our first question, and this first question will go to Emily Smith. What are the current challenges facing this school district, and what is your vision for education in this community?
The most current challenges we are facing, in my opinion, are no way unique to our district. I think the most pressing issue is the gap in education and the social-emotional issues plaguing our students due to the COVID pandemic. I've discussed this issue with our superintendent and other administrators, and I feel very confident that our district is already preparing resolutions to bridge the gap between what students should have learned in a normal school year to what they have learned in the last year. Another issue that is important to me, or I think is a challenge for all school districts, is the huge political divide in our nation. It's important to me that our students are educated on issues at the appropriate age in a nonpartisan manner and allowed to learn about topics from different perspectives and formulate their own opinions. It's my hope and prayer that the nation can find common ground and become united again. And I think teaching our youth respect for each other is a step towards rectifying the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I think you're going to hear some of the same responses to this question. As we know, this year has been super challenging for everybody, and that cannot be understated. Our biggest challenge is by far the aftermath here of, as we heal as a community and provide what we want for our students, and we all want maximum face-to-face time with our students. Being a teacher, there's nothing that we can provide better than that face-to-face atmosphere and helping all of our kids. We absolutely have problems with anxiety and depression with children, social-emotional health, but that is a very, very tough, it's a tough challenge to handle, and we need to step up to do that. It is not just because of this pandemic. Being a teacher and seeing students that are coming through the educational system for 18 years, it is different now. The teaching job is more challenging, but it's more important than ever that we are finding a way to connect with these students and helping them socially-emotionally.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey? You're muted, Mr. Mahaffey.
I figured that would happen once. So the current challenges facing our school district is continuing to educate the students in a safe and effective manner. We need to support both in-person and remote learning models, at least through the end of this year. The differing opinions on how to do this may be politically motivated, a result of fear of contagion, or just a strong opinion. While we need to listen to all, we also need to listen to the health and safety guidance that is best for our staff and students. Our challenge continues as we need a plan for helping our students with the learning loss that has occurred. There's no denying that, and the increased social-emotional needs of our staff and students, as my colleagues have indicated. My vision for education in this community is coming out of this pandemic as strong as ever. We want every real estate agent to promote Crystal Lake as a destination community because of the schools. We want our schools to be progressive, accepting, challenging, and a champion for each and every student. I want an administrative staff that seeks out and hires absolute rock stars for our kids when it comes to being the best teacher that they ever had.
Thank you. Mr. Palumbit?
Thank you so much. I'm actually going to address the second part of that question. What is our vision for education in the community? And I agree with everything that's been said with respect to returning to a new normal and the pandemic. But my vision is, it's simple. We need to keep innovating. And I think that what we can do is start to utilize and capitalize on the innovations that the school district, its staff, and its community have embraced. As in, you know, unfortunately, as a result of the COVID and the pandemic situation, we have students who are learning in different ways, not all of them successfully, and we have to acknowledge that. But some are doing well in a, you know, in the current learning situation. So we can't discount any of the innovation that has come out of this, you know, undesirable worldwide situation. That being said, when I do look, you know, at returning students, it has to be done in a safe way that is going to maximize the ability of the school district to meet the needs and equity, you know, and meet the needs and equity for all students who need to return.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Talbert?
I think one of the biggest concerns is getting the kids caught up academically. They lost a year of education. Another challenge is how the district is going to address the mental health crisis that our students are experiencing due to the closing of the schools. My vision for education would be to teach our students to think and how to become responsible adults and improve academics. If you look at the Illinois Report Card, more than half of the students did not meet the state standards in ELA and Math. In 2019, let me correct myself. In 2019, less than half of the students in District 47 met or exceeded the standards. And I also think the district needs to better prepare our eighth graders for high school. Again, looking at the Illinois Report Card for Lundall Middle School in 2019, so that was last year, only 38% of the eighth graders at that one school passed algebra one.
Thank you.
As a parent and a taxpayer, for me, that's very concerning.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barton?
Well, let me just say that one of my goals as a school board member is to try and gain consensus among stakeholders. And I think with this question, we've accomplished that. I see the biggest challenge facing the school district, the same as everyone else, and that's dealing with the pandemic and how to effectively educate students while meeting the requirements to keeping them safe. Moving forward, I would like to see students in school as much as possible, just like everyone else, while maintaining a safe environment for them and the staff. And I think we also need to start considering, you know, what supports are needed for the students that have been hardest hit by the pandemic, whether that be academically or socially-emotionally, so that they can catch up with their peers.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. Powell. What do you know about the culturally responsive teaching and learning standards put forth by the Illinois State Board of Education, and what is your viewpoint on them? You're muted, please.
Yeah, I did it, Tim. Sorry. I really do appreciate this question. I really like the language in those standards and the fact that it really encourages, actually requires, self-reflection as a teacher and to really, I mean, one of the biggest things I try to teach my students is, and one of the hardest things, is empathy and to really try to put yourself in somebody else's shoes. So the fact that teachers should be required to specifically look at what, you know, what they're teaching and where they come from culturally and otherwise, and how that affects others, so important. This year, believe it or not, I was just talking the other day with a colleague, he had some really deep connections with kids. We are on a different level. They've seen me teaching in my house. I've seen how, you know, they are in their homes, and it really has driven us to have this deeper connection that I've never had, you know, before with some of these kids. And it's going to be tough at the end of the year to say goodbye to some of these kids. I'm going to tell you that.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
Yeah, the standards are an attempt to get a better understanding of the importance of the uniqueness of all students, but it now includes staff in understanding a culturally diverse staff environment, and I think it's fantastic. The standards work on creating responsive teachers, providing for student advocacy. They develop responsible curriculum, and it creates lasting partnerships with families and communities through cross-cultural communication. Standards are, quite frankly, long overdue, and it's a sad state in our society that we even need standards for this. These should be inherent traits in who we are as people to understand that every person, while unique and different from ourselves, have the right to be heard, understood, and happy. Differing opinions, looks, characteristics, et cetera, should be celebrated and be used for the advancement of society, not its downfall. Never let it be said that District 47 is not an accepting community. We not only accept everyone for who they are, but we use everyone to strengthen our mission.
Thank you. Mr. Palumbit?
So I'm absolutely in support of these, and, you know, like my colleague said, pretty much overdue here in the state. And anyone, I would really question, not, you know, internally question someone who is not in support of them, who is interested in entering any type of public service, specifically public education. You know, with public education, we don't, nor do we need the, you know, we don't have the opportunity to choose who we teach, nor do we want that opportunity. We choose to teach everyone, or we choose to be a social worker, a psychologist. And so our schools, including our staff, need to be representative of our community. So again, you know, we need to value our students' feedback, which is one of those standards there. We need to develop those relationships with families, and like you've said, I've zoomed from my house into other people's homes as we've had support meetings, and that is, you know, to a certain extent, you know, more connection that you can make with some students just passing them in the hallway. So I'm absolutely in support of these. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Ms. Talbert?
Well, I have a completely different view. I've read and I've understood these standards, and I find them abhorrent. ISBE states, "The culturally responsible teacher will embrace and encourage progressive viewpoints and perspectives that leverage asset thinking toward traditionally marginalized populations." So what these standards are doing is they are forcing teachers to embrace only one viewpoint. These standards impose a political litmus test on teachers to get or keep a job in the Illinois educational system. And I don't care what side of the political spectrum my children's teachers are on. They should teach our children to think, not how to think. Political views, morals, and values should be taught in the home and not in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
So being aware of our own biases and beliefs and acknowledging that others may have different beliefs, which are also valuable, and understanding that certain inequities are present in our society, these are not new concepts. ISBE has now established these standards to include them in what teachers and support personnel and administrators do. My viewpoint is that the educators in the field should be made aware of these standards through professional development and implementation of policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I have read through them, and I'm grateful for the educators here describing how it can be put into practice because as I read them, that's where my question was, how does this get put into practice in the classroom? But I got the general sense of a need to educate our youth to be cognizant of their surroundings and be empathetic by teaching and understanding that not everyone has the same perspective and background, which I think is, it's absolutely necessary. I know our district has a focus group already established to consider how to implement it into our district, and it's a topic that needs to be addressed, but carefully and with a lot of consideration. The more we're able to cultivate students' differences, achievements, and similarities, the more we're able to value those differences. So.
Thank you. My next question will start with Mr. Mahaffey. What is your position on vocational education for students who are not college-bound?
So vocational education is very important for those students who are not college-bound. It's a necessary part of our educational system. The question is, at what time is a child's education, in a child's education, do you steer them towards a voc-ed track? This is usually done early on in high school as students develop their academic skill set and map out their future goals. However, elementary and middle school education should be preparing students to be successful in both college and vocational education paths. This is done through the specific foundational skills necessary for advanced training they will need after high school and in high school. Middle schools can enhance this learning model by including exploratory courses in a myriad of vocational education areas. They will build a foundation skill set that will also be important for any college-bound student. The continued assessment of their aptitude for a given skill will assist in guiding their career choice through middle school and into high school.
Thank you. Mr. Palumbit?
Great, thanks. I'm going to challenge the question just here for a moment. I am a certified career and tech ed teacher. I'm a business education teacher in addition to special education. And I would almost challenge the word vocational education as it relates to the not-college-bound student because I believe career and technical education, right, regardless of a student's desire or ability to attend a post-high school institution, is a truly valuable component to a successful and productive life. is a, it's a truly valuable, uh, component to a successful and productive life, um, beyond the school system. So if you're gonna go to college or not, you still have to be employed at some point. So, um, I do believe that exposure starting as early as sixth grade with various different careers. Obviously, of course, age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate activities is, is a wonderful way, uh, to expose students to careers. You know, you ask someone, what's a career? And they're gonna tell you a doctor and a policeman and a, and a teacher and they're wonderful careers. But even within those, uh, specific careers, the umbrella of other options are out there. And we need to make sure that students are aware of what is ahead of them.
Thank you. Ms. Talbert?
Yeah, I agree with him. I think vocational education is very important for all students, whether they're going to college or not. Vocational education, um, not only helps students that are not going to college find a rewarding and high-paying job in a trade. It also teaches life skills that every student should learn in order to become a responsible and self-sufficient adult. And it should start, well, the earlier the better. He suggested sixth grade. I think that's a great idea. But if there are some vocational training skills that could be taught in the elementary school level, that's appropriate. I think that would be good as well.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
As I mentioned before, my goal has always been to support all students, including those who may not be necessarily college-bound. Vocational education should be a component offered to students as they prepare for life after high school. We need people who have specialized skills in those areas. And all students, as stated by other candidates, all students should have a basic knowledge of things like cooking and car maintenance and home repairs. Because these are all skills that we need as adults.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
I agree with, uh, what everyone has said. Um, however, I feel it would be more appropriate at the high school age level. Um, I would like to be ensured that our elementary students and junior high students get the core education that they need. Um, and have a good foundation before, before considering different, um, vocations and career paths.
Thank you.
But I'm definitely in support of it in high school, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Thank you. And being at the high school, um, I know we do have a lot of programs and those are continuing to develop and those are only gonna get better. Um, in the years to come, I know that and I trust in one fifty-five to do that for sure. Um, from an elementary's perspective, I would have a really, really hard time, um, even, I do have a hard time talking about somebody not being college-bound in eighth grade. Um, I just don't agree with that. Um, so I do think that we need to continue, we just need to encourage kids. My big, my big thing is learn to learn, like just keep loving learning and learn how you learn as a kid. And I would, we really need to keep working on, um, responsibility amongst kids, having them advocate for themselves. And, um, just continuing to learn, no matter what path they're gonna take, you know, high school beyond. And I would, I would challenge us as District forty-seven to continue to look at, you know, backwards when we do start to, um, put kids into certain programs and that we're continuing to make sure everybody is getting a great experience through the elementary education.
Thank you. My next question begins with Mr. Palumbit. How can a, a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?
Okay, there we go. Well, I think it's very, um, you know, it's very much tied to strategic, the strategic plan that the, uh, school district has. Um, and, and really each strategic plan should have a goal and I, you know, I've read, uh, the D forty-seven strategic plan and it also has strategies. I do believe that there should be feedback, continual feedback, um, to the board and also to the public on the progression toward the goals. Um, and actual, you know, specific action items that are being done by, uh, district staff to achieve, uh, progress toward each of those goals. Additionally, the, um, any budget enhancement or budget request or a request for additional expenditure that the administration may make to the board should be directly tied to the goals, strategies and overall outcomes tied to the strategic plan. As we look to improve, um, each component of, you know, of, each component of the strategic plan as it relates to the district and community as a whole.
Thank you. Ms. Talbert?
I agree with them that you should look at the strategic plan. That's a great idea. You should see what the goals are. Um, another way to find out if the district is actually meeting the goals is to take a look at the Illinois report card for the district. And I know I brought this up before. In, um, two thousand and nineteen, two, and two thousand and twenty, so that was last school year. According to the Illinois report card, only thirty-six percent of the students in the District forty-seven met the target for their grade level in ELA. And only, and six percent exceeded. Now, if you look at math for that same school year, only thirty-seven met the target for their grade level and five percent exceeded. So I really think the district needs to focus on academics. You know, that their targets was a little bit better than the state average of, the state average was twenty-seven percent and five percent, that's for math. But as a parent and a taxpayer, to me, this is very concerning. My tax dollars fund the schools and they're providing me with a less-than-average service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Barton?
Part of establishing a goal in the first place is determining what it would look like when that goal is met. This is where goals often fall apart because my picture of accomplishment or success might be very different than your picture, for example. If we have a clear picture of where we want to go and why we need to get there, then the goal is more likely to be carried out by those involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Um, in my experience on the board, I have understood that it's our responsibility to oversee the position of the superintendent, who is then responsible for carrying out, um, the decisions that are made at the board level. Our superintendent, Dr. Hines, does a phenomenal job communicating to us as a board, um, through weekly updates and direct communication when needed. I have no desire or need to micromanage that situation. I am confident we have the right person in place. Um, with that being said, I've been very grateful for the opportunity to visit schools. Since I'm not an educator, it's been very helpful for me to go to school and see what, how things that we have, we decide on a board level actually play it, come into play in the classroom. Um, and I have full intentions of continuing to do that if re-elected.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I'm so glad, um, Emily led with that because number one, um, we need to have seven people who have a common goal of doing what is right for kids. Um, and then constant reflection from that and we will absolutely get constructive criticism and we will do the best we can with that. But the biggest thing, um, Emily said was that Dr. Hines does an absolutely phenomenal job of communicating with the community. I think, um, you know, obviously this last year has been very challenging. I think back to times when Dr. Hines has sat for an hour and communicated to help her, her teachers out and understand where we're headed with decisions. And we need to have a strong leader, um, and a strong relationship. And, uh, that still means we can challenge each other in our thoughts. But we all believe that we're doing what is best for the kids and we're trying to tell the community that and we're listening to the community. And, uh, obviously, um, we always want to be fiscally responsible and make sure we are taking care, um, with responsible decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
I believe that a board will best know if its goals are accomplished and policies are carried out, if they actually focus on these activities. And try not to get bogged down in the operational issues. Effective boards have high expectations for student achievement and all student services. A data-driven board is better able to assess, uh, the success of board goals. Goals should not only have a desired result to be achieved, but have included data to be collected. How the data is gonna be measured, how it's gonna be read and what data should say to determine a level of success. Board goals are usually buried in a strategic plan, hopefully not on a shelf somewhere, but on a day-to-day manual that the district is using. However, it does funnel down to the superintendent and other administrative goals across the district. The more aligned these goals are, the clearer the results will be and the better understanding that the board and community will have at achieving these goals. A district's ability to analyze the results of these goals through a clear and concise process is very important to the ongoing growth of the district. Continued feedback is very important.
Thank you. My next question will begin with Ms. Talbert. What experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
As a mother of five special needs children, I have exceptional organization skills. I published a book in two thousand and eighteen, so I have writing skills. I have managed a household budget. I have leadership skills. I ran an online magazine for twelve years where I managed two hundred independent authors. And as a mother of children with special needs, I have a thorough understanding of and firsthand experience with the district's IEP program and their special ed services. I'm also a professional flutist and have experience teaching music.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
As I mentioned, I have thirty-three years of experience working to support children, their parents and fellow educators. I've learned how to consider a variety of viewpoints, find that common ground and working together, establish a plan which meets our goals. I would apply these experiences and skills to my responsibilities as a school board member.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Um, I had the opportunity to work at McHenry County College in student services, placing students in, um, volunteer opportunities relevant to their coursework and career path. Um, though the community college is very different than our student body at D forty-seven, it afforded me an introduction to the school system. Uh, more importantly, I learned about the robust services provided in our county and consequently the needs of our population. Um, the experience collaborating with the professors, the students and the community organizations really, um, prepared me for serving on the D forty-seven board. Though my knowledge of the education system is not as, um, deep as the other candidates or a lot of the other candidates. I do have the knowledge and ability to gather information from several sources, listen to concerns and make decisions based on the best in, interest as many as possible. Um, my previous work experience has certainly helped me to be a better board member. Um, and my continued role as a parent and a community member allows me the confidence to fulfill the role of the board member.
Thank you. Mr. Powell, please.
Um, first and foremost, being on the board for one term has helped me immensely. Um, I have learned so much over the last four years and I look forward to, um, definitely taking, I will be the first person to say I have not done everything correctly. Um, in every turn, but I look, um, to improve moving forward. I have an absolute, I think the biggest drive is just the intrinsic drive. Anytime you have that intrinsic drive for anything, you're gonna be passionate about it and you're gonna try to do what's best for your community. And I absolutely have that about education. Uh, I, I, I don't think you need to be a teacher to be on the school board at all. Um, but I won't lie that it is an absolute asset to know, um, what it's like to be a teacher, um, what it is like to be, um, on the other side of receiving information from administration and, um, have feedback there to improve. And to just have, you know, positive conversations and relationships. Um, and, you know, that's what I, I feel like just all of that experience, I've, I've had the educational experience my whole life. And, um, I just wanna keep trying to, uh, serve our community in that way.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
I do think I'm an effective communicator and understand the extreme importance of listening to all viewpoints. As a school administrator for the past twenty-seven years, I have experienced seeing firsthand what makes an effective board and so, not so effective boards. I've seen both of them in action. I have also been a member of the SEDOM board in the past, which is an important role to ensure the quality, ongoing services for students most in need of special education services. I also understand the role of the school board. We are a governing body with approved policies to guide our success. We are a voice for all community members with or without students in our schools. The main functions of a school board is to clarify the district's purpose, hire and evaluate a superintendent, monitor performance and take responsibility for itself as a board. It is very important to understand these roles so that a board does not lose its purpose by micromanaging areas of a school district that really isn't their role.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Palumbit?
So, um, you know, obviously in addition to the, uh, my, my career as an educator in both special education and, um, general education, teaching and administration, I can tell you that I was very active, um, within my community when I first started as a teacher. And I was active with collaboration, um, with our staff, administration and school board in passing a historic referendum for my school district. Um, back in, uh, two thousand and five. Um, I had also been an influential individual among the staff and a leader, um, to the point where I was asked by our then-school board president to testify to the, uh, General Assembly's House Revenue and Finance Committee regarding, uh, an EDA and economic, an economic development activity, um, area within our school district that was funneling funds away from the district to a local municipality, right? That is still an ongoing fight. Thirty-plus years, our school district is hoping to come to a resolution in the very near future. My point is, is that it's, uh, it's important to have skills to work with all stakeholders within, uh, the District forty-seven community and I've been there. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. My next question will begin with Ms. Barton. If you were given three choices of what to do with a budget surplus, which would you choose and why? Would you return it to the taxpayers, return registration fees to the parents, provide teachers with hazard pay if they have been in the classroom with students this school year, or keep the money as surplus in district funds?
Thank you for the question. Um, depending on the size of the surplus, it may actually cost more logistically to return the money to taxpayers, parents or to teachers. Therefore, I would choose to maintain the money in the district funds. Having a cushion for unexpected expenses is a financially sound decision. Then if an issue comes up later, we are prepared to handle it and we don't need to ask for more money from the taxpayers down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Um, I had a hard time answering this question because it totally depends on the amount of the surplus. Um, first, I would like to say I'd like to be able to return it to the taxpayers, but it would have to be large enough of a surplus for it to make sense. And then I would question, why do we have that surplus? And we really need to rectify the situation and adjust our tax levy. The second option is something that we have done the last few years as a district and I support it and will continue to do so. Because we did have a surplus, not large enough, um, to do something substantial with. But we were able to, um, lower registration fees and, and, um, provide a lot of supplies. That thirty seconds got me, sorry. A lot of supplies to students, allowing for, really for families. Um, I would not be, I would not be comfortable making a decision on the behalf of taxpayers, um, to give hazard pay. Because our teachers' pay and benefits have not changed during the pandemic. Um, also, we have followed guidelines that have allowed them to be safe and not considered a hazardous working environment. And I'm told to stop.
Mr. Powell?
Yeah, picking up there with, uh, choice C about providing teachers hazard pay, um, this year has been absolutely challenging for teachers. We know that for sure, um, I being one. Um, it has been very hard, but I would not support at all giving hazard payout. Every day that I kinda complain about it, I am, I am blessed that I have had a paying job through this entire pandemic. Um, and I know our teachers are as well. I, I, I would have a combination of all the other letters, um, or all the other choices there, A, B and D. Um, I would wanna return it to the taxpayers, but I would wanna return it through our school system. I would want us to just continue to look at what doors we can open with our funds. Um, you know, the, there are projects that come up, as we know, Coventry, Coventry was basically a new school, is a huge expense. Um, we've been working with getting, uh, better furniture for our schools and, and I would be a big advocate of, you know, obviously seeing why there's a surplus, but with, um, the situation, I would wanna talk with my other board members on how we can best, um, use those funds, um, moving forward. If there's a stop sign, I'm sorry, everything's kinda frozen. It's frozen on my screen right now, so I can't see the stop sign.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
Thank you. You know, it really depends on many factors. A school district, it has to have a surplus. We are only as healthy as our second payroll in May while we wait for our June taxes to be available to the district. Otherwise, we're gonna be paying anticipation warrants. Otherwise, we're going to be paying anticipation warrants, which is interest on interest. There are also times that while a district is building up its reserves, it's also returning money to the taxpayers. This may come in the form of an abatement while it allows a district to maximize its ability to stabilize its revenue sources. A healthy district should also be continually assessing its return on investment when making any decision with its spending policy. There should always be a positive impact on the school community, and if not, there needs to be a process of evaluating why we're spending the money the way we are. If there is hazard pay, I believe it should come through some type of stimulus money from the federal government, not local tax dollars. We need to remember that many parents were unemployed due to the pandemic and many businesses were under. And it, we just can't go there, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Talbot?
Yeah, it would depend, especially would depend on how large the surpluses. If it's a really extensive surplus, then I would be in favor of returning some of it to the taxpayers, but if it's not that much of a surplus, probably a good idea to leave it in the funds just in case something happens. It would just, it would depend on a lot of factors, but like most of my colleagues here, I would not give it out as hazard pay because the, it sounds like the teachers were well taken care of during the pandemic. But yeah, it would depend on how large it is.
So I think we have time for one more question.
Anna, can I interrupt you and have an opportunity to answer that question as well?
Sure.
Well, I like, you know, I wasn't necessarily thrilled with having to maybe choose one of the four bullet points there. I would like to see the district utilize it as in a surplus. I've worked for an organization that had to issue, you know, the warrants to make payrolls. And it's tough. It's very tough. And the longevity of having to repay that just seems to spiral. So that is not a place that we want to go here in any way, shape, or form. But being respectful of the taxpayers' investments, right, not only their tax dollars, but also in facilities and operational expenditures, we as a school board can look at ways to enhance current infrastructure, look at curriculum enhancements, whether we look at, you know, we don't, I don't know how many textbooks we actually buy now, but potentially upgrading or updating digital resources as we move into, you know, more technology within our schools. I do, I do support using some type of grant funds, the CARES Act, to address student fees, but I'm not so sure that the surplus would be appropriate for that.
Thank you. My next question will start with Ms. Smith. Twenty twenty was the year of COVID. Health experts say we are destined to encounter something similar in the future. What would you do to, what would you propose now to be prepared for the future?
I think further understanding the technology and that we used as a district. Our staff was kind of, I mean, they were catapulted into using one-to-one devices, especially with kindergarten who did not have it previously. First grade, I'm not sure exactly which age groups did not have technology, but I think we did a really, really nice job of finding which which online services worked best for our students and our staff and our parents, but just learning more about them so that we are better prepared even more so if we have to do remote learning again. And I think our district did a really nice job of not working in silos, but working as a team to come up with the best situation for our students. Obviously, no plan was perfect, but I think our district, I really am proud of what our district put together and the different learning models that were available to our students.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
Can you please repeat the question, Anna?
Twenty twenty was the year of COVID. Health experts say we are destined to encounter something similar in the future. What would you propose now to prepare for that future?
Yeah, I would, I would say we need to continue to, we need to continue to have the conversations of the what-if. Every school district should, and I don't think that that, I really think that we should look to have been more unity than, I think one thing that got us was, everything was so local with this pandemic and everybody was doing things so differently across the state and across the nation. And I would say districts should look to somewhat unite in the fact of that there are a lot of things we've learned from this moving forward, but we need to look at the ways that we did not, we did not meet the needs of our community. And obviously, some are realistic, some were unrealistic, but we need to look and just come up with more plans and hopefully not have to use them. But we also need to make sure it does not redefine us as going down a path we don't think is pedagogically sound as instructors. We have amazing teachers. I know there will be deficits, but we will step up and we will help kids with their, their learning deficiencies that they've had during this.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
You know, I remember back in two thousand, we were required to write a pandemic plan and I can tell you exactly in the middle school office in Fox River Grove where that pandemic plan is still sitting. I remember thinking, you know, it's only as good as the day that we closed the book. And there was absolutely no one that said, reach back and grab your two thousand pandemic plan and turn to page five to figure out what we're going to do on March sixteenth. It just didn't happen because we knew it was all obsolete. There's going to be a couple of things that come out of this. One is there's going to be ways that we're teaching kids right now that we never even thought of. I know we're in crisis, but there's going to be some gems that come out of this. And some of those gems, and a lot of those gems are the outstanding teachers and the kids that they didn't know that they could do what they're currently doing. But what we're going to need to do is have a framework in place so that we know what we're going to do in the issue of the unknown, because that's really what this was. But we'll have a better idea to do it, and everyone's been very efficient in doing it.
Thank you. Mr. Palumbit?
Thank you. I think we need to almost approach this like we do our annual fire drills and bus evacuation drills, right? And severe weather drills in the sense that we need to practice for it. And when something is found to be inefficient or we're not evacuating a school building in the time the fire department wants us to do, that's my analogy, of course, we need to then fix that issue or address it. So I think although we don't have any idea what the next big thing could be, I remember as a teacher flipping through my classroom emergency plan. It was in this red binder. We had a plan for a plane crash. We had a plan for an earthquake, right? So I don't think it is, I don't think it's outrageous to have a plan for a pandemic or any type of other large type of, you know, I don't know, illness, virus, medical type emergency that might come. But it kind of, to Tim's point, it needs to be, there needs to be a framework and it needs to be revisited, not only with the school district staff, local health departments, police departments, fire departments, emergency services. So just the ongoing reviewing of that plan will make us, you know, in the best situation possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Talbert?
Oh, yeah. What I'm going to say is probably similar to what everybody else is saying, but like this whole year, it was new. Nobody expected this to happen and the school district at first didn't know exactly what to do, but they, they should learn from it. And, you know, some, some of the education plans with the remote learning, some of it worked. Some of it, they had to tweak a little bit. And I agree, they should have a plan laid out now, now that the year is gone. And they should have a plan laid out and make sure they do what worked the best for all the schools and all the students.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
I agree with all my colleagues. We have learned a lot in this past year. Not necessarily things that we wanted to learn, or certainly not at the pace that we would have liked to have learned them, but we've kind of taken a crash course and I don't, you know, unfortunately, I don't think any district did it perfectly day one, but I think that Crystal Lake definitely did it as well or better than some other districts. So, you know, definitely the use of technology has grown exponentially and that's huge. And I think those characteristics, those skills are going to stick with us even after the pandemic. Obviously, we need to keep looking at, you know, where the technology was not successful, where we did not meet students' needs. What other alternative activities did we provide that were successful? Or what do we need to pull together moving forward for the future? So that would be my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Folks, we are at the end of our questions and I will do ask for closing statements. We will go in reverse order from where we began. I would like to remind each of you, if you have a web address or a Facebook address that you would like to give out, please make sure you do. And you have two minutes. So I'd like to begin with Ms. Talbert.
Hello. The Board of Education should be an accurate representation of the community of Crystal Lake. After all, the schools are funded by the taxpayers. It is also important to have a strong parent leader who will advocate for the best interests of all the students in the district. I will bring common sense to the Board of Education and put our students first when making decisions. I have the necessary skills and experiences to help improve our schools in District Forty-seven. You can contact me on Facebook. I am, I started a Facebook group and you can join our group. It's open D forty-seven and one fifty-five schools for in-person learning and I can be contacted there.
Thank you. Mr. Palumbit?
So thanks again to the League. I really appreciate the opportunity to participate and of course, to my colleagues here on the screen. It was great getting to know you and hearing your views. Really what I would like to encourage everyone who's watching this, everyone who's going to cast a ballot early or on Election Day on April sixth, be informed. And like I said earlier, when I first started, local elections really, truly, truly matter. I will commit to the, to the community to always be responsive, always be interested in hearing your comments, your concerns, your criticisms, because that's how we grow. That's how I grew as a professional and that's how I will conduct myself as a school board member. We look for finding common ground, even though we may not always agree. I do believe that communication is key and I do commit to that communication. I hope I'm elected. If I'm not, I would encourage the, the community to continue to reach out to the school board like they have. And if I am, you know, like I said, I will be responsive to the comments and concerns. One of my goals, obviously, is to have an involved and fully-attended school board meeting every single time because it shows that the community is taking an active interest and is truly invested in what is going on. And we also need to, as a school board and as a school district, work with our community to engage them, to encourage them to attend school board meetings. So in summary, again, I encourage everyone to be informed, read about all the candidates and make informed decisions when you go and cast your ballots. Communication, I will wrap that up. I can be contacted via email, dan d four seven b o e at gmail dot com. Or I can be, or I should say, and I can be found on Facebook. Dan for F O R, the word for, Dan for D four seven. And I appreciate your time today and look forward to talking with the community in the future here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahaffey?
There we go. So during my tenure as superintendent and business manager, I've had a really good relationship with both my staff and my Board of Education. We worked as a team and it continued to propel us to the top of the county in academics year after year. As business manager, I managed the ability to pay off four bonds during my tenure to be debt-free next year. I'm sorry to say I won't see, as I head into retirement, that last payment while I'm very proud of it. While driving down our debt, we are also able to maintain competitive salaries for staff and also create exciting learning environments for our kids. Foremost, I believe in great teachers and their ability to make a difference in our children, to help develop outstanding citizens for the community, state, and country. I truly believe one of the most important roles of an administrative team is to seek out, hire, and not lose the very best teachers and support staff for our students. We need absolute rock stars that love their job and love our kids. The staff also needs to understand and have the ability to respond to the ever-growing social emotional needs of our students. Many times, a child will see their teacher more than their family. We owe it them, to them, to have the very best. Each tax dollar needs to have a purpose to allow District Forty-seven to provide a top-quality education for all students in a safe and nurturing environment. There's been a lot of loss during this pandemic and it still continues. What hasn't been lost is the resiliency of our educators, students, and families. While some might complain about what schools have not done for their child, I celebrate the incredible perseverance of our teachers and support staff so that every child is heard, cared for, and remembered. I have seen it in Fox River Grove and I know what's happening in District Forty-seven. I want to be a part of a school district that uses the crisis to move from good to great. Good is the necessary evil of great. Let District Forty-seven be a strong part in the beacon that continues to make Crystal Lake a destination for families and outstanding educators. Thank you, and I appreciate your support on April sixth. I can be found by searching Tim hyphen Mahaffey hyphen D forty-seven. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
Well, again, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having us on here. I love, I love the phrase on the League of Women Voters website, "Democracy is not a spectator sport." And like Dan said, it is just huge that everybody is educated in this election, not just for this race, but for others. And I am not going to have any great, and I don't want to have any one issue, one agenda where I'm going to get everybody to be able to vote for me. I hope that through this, albeit uncomfortable, as I'm sure many would say, running for an office is definitely not what we want to do. We want to have the role. But we learn a lot about ourselves through it. And I kind of put that into the eyes of, you know, for education, our kids, they are, they are constantly growing up in a world where everything is at their fingertips and it's hard to teach them that education is a journey where you fail and it's not easy. And although I don't have, you know, one agenda item, I do have a passion and I think it's a hard one coming up for us that we, we look for kids to really learn about themselves through their journey, through struggles. And it needs to be the student at the center of that journey. And although, you know, there's many things I want to be healthy for our district, that is absolutely my passion. And I hope that I've been able to...
I think we've lost your sound.
I'll wait till you say I'm back on.
You're back on.
I'm back on. I'm so sorry. It did say I was unstable while I was giving my closing argument. No, but honestly, just, I want, I want, I want the voters to vote for somebody who is representing them in the community. And I, if I am that person, fantastic. If somebody else's views align more for you, that's great, too. I just think we, we need to make sure we're having an informed decision and I thank you for giving me the opportunity for speaking my voice here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
My motivation for joining the D forty-seven school board back in August of two thousand and nineteen was to learn more about the school, school district and get back to my community as a representative for the entire district. But the last twelve months have certainly been challenging for all of us, but it really further instilled my desire to be an advocate for students and the community members while very much respecting and relying on the voice of educators. I do not have a strong agenda for a specific change. Rather, I feel responsible to research issues as they arise and gain feedback from all parties to gain more knowledge and help guide my decisions to make positive improvements. Our district has a strong leadership team that deserves support. And I consider, considering I'm not an educator, I very much respect the knowledge and talents of educators and don't, and plan to support them. But my role on the school board is to bring a different perspective to decisions and to be the voice for the community. I'm really thankful for this opportunity to... I'm really thankful for this opportunity to learn more about all the candidates tonight, and I thank you guys for giving that opportunity to our community members as well, and, oh, you can get ahold of me by Facebook, I am Emily Smith with a hyphen D47 School Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barton.
As everyone else said, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. As I've said before, I want to make sure that the district is meeting the needs of all the students in the, in the community. An effective school board member works as part of a team within the guidelines and restricted, restrictions placed upon a district by the state and other outside agencies, and respectfully listens to the viewpoints of the many stakeholders, including parents, teachers, other school personnel, and community members. My goal as a school board member would be to maintain the district's reputation of providing high-quality services, establish a strong consensus amongst all the district stakeholders, balance the needs of the students and staff while being fiscally responsible, and provide guidance and leadership to the challenges that will come up over the next four years. And yes, that's my dog in the background. As a voter, you need to decide what values you want to see prioritized in your school district and which candidates best represent those values. I hope I am one of those candidates, and you vote for me on April 6th or during early voting. And I can be contacted at my website, bartonforf47schoolboard.org, or my public email address, Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna, I didn't want to cut you off, but I didn't give, I am on Facebook, too, I kind of cut in and out, so I just wanted to make sure, and if, yeah, @JPowellD47, so thank you, sorry, Anna.
No, thank you. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to moderate this forum, and my sincere thanks for your taking this time this evening and your participation. I would like to remind our audience, if you are not a registered voter, you can find registration and election information in the McHenry County and Illinois Legal Women Voter website. Early voting begins March 22nd. Please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot. Your vote is your voice. Finally, we would like to encourage all candidates to reclaim and recycle their campaign signs. At this point, I will turn the meeting back over to Kate Williams.
Thank you, Anna, and again, candidates, I feel like you've really educated the public tonight, we appreciate it. You know, you put a lot of effort into this. This will be recorded, and then we'll send you a link as soon as it's ready, so you can put it on your website. So, again, thank you viewers that are able to see this on our YouTube channel, thank you for also taking the time to become more educated about what's going on in your community. Good night.